Right.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of January 11th, 2022. And as everybody knows, this is a remote meeting. If you are a guest, when you need or want to speak, you have to raise your hand. And can we have the roll call, Kristin?
Vice Chair Kuntzler.
Hello.
Present.
Commissioner Chalmers.
Yes, present.
Commissioner Swisher.
Present.
Chair Wagstaff.
Present.
So the record show that we have four in attendance and Laura Tauber, Commissioner, is absent.
Okay, so if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on matters that aren't on the agenda, please raise your hand. I don't see any hands.
I see no hands raised.
In that case, can we have the planning directors' report? Or Kristin's report, or Dan?
Dan, there we go.
Yeah, I have a short. I have just a couple of things I want to talk about, but my name is Daniel Horford. As you can see, I'm filling in for Neil now that he's retired, hopefully happily. I haven't emailed him in a week, so I think he's doing okay. So a couple of things I have tonight. I know that Neil brought up before the SB9, the state Senate Bill 9, state mandate for dwelling units and urban lot splits. The council passed interim emergency ordinance on December 15th. So that it would, because the state legislation went into effect December 1st, so we wanted to get something urgency ordinance done before then. And now we have a new ordinance that's going to City Council on January 19th. And that's going to extend the existing ordinance or the urgency ordinance that we just had passed by 10 months and 15 days to give us pretty much a year to work on a more objective development standards for SB9 projects. On a side note, we got an email today from someone that's interested in doing an SB9 project. So I'll be in the office tomorrow and trying to straighten that out and see how we go on that. We do have some objective design guidelines that went along with it, subdivision and zoning guidelines as well. But we want to tighten it up and make sure that we're complying with state statute and so forth. On another note, the Housing Element website has set the launch pretty soon. They've been working on that pretty diligently and it will provide the public with information on the process and as well as an opportunity to interact and learn more about the development of the latest housing project. So that's all I have right now. I'm sure I'll have more subsequent meetings. Those are my primary things I've been working on. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions of Dan?
Not at this time.
Is that, did I hear somebody? Is that Daniel?
No, I didn't. I just mumbled not at this time.
Oh, okay. Stan, appreciate it.
Sure.
So I guess we have one consent item, and that is 38 Corde to Luca in Greenbrier. And the person is asked to withdraw it so that they can put up story polls, I believe. Unless one of the commissioners wants to pull that off of consent, I guess it automatically is passed. Is that, is that correct, Kristin?
It's a continuance that we're passing.
Yeah.
Right. They're not pulling it off. They're just requesting a continuance for a different hearing date. We had already publicly noticed the project before they asked for this.
I see.
So that's why we put it on as a continuance. You need to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yeah, I move to approve the consent calendar of today's meeting.
Do we have a second?
I can second.
You want to take a roll call, Kristin?
Commissioner Kuntzler?
Aye.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Aye.
Commissioner Swisher?
Aye.
Chair Wagstaff?
Aye.
And the record shows there is four i's in one absentee, which is Laura Tauber.
Okay, so we have one public hearing item, and that is 116 Montevista Avenue. Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Wagstaff and members of the commission. First of all, I'd like to indicate that for this project, 116 Montevista Avenue, staff has received four comment letters from nearby property owners expressing concerns related to the proposed project. One letter was from Diane Maxon at 122 Montevista. We also heard from Frank and Susan Lobedon at 16 Baltimore, one from Jim Lynch at 118 Montevista, and one from Tom Clemmons at 112 Montevista. So the project applicants are requesting demolition of the existing single-family residence and construction of a new 2,858 square foot two-story home with a 1,207 square foot basement on a 7,147 square foot parcel. That would be a net parcel. Basement level is exempt from the inclusion of floor area and includes 297 square feet, square foot, single car garage, storage, mechanical rooms, and stairways to the upper floors. Additional improvements include landscaping and swimming pool. As proposed, the project requires a design review and a variance. The variance is for the onsite parking, which requires for a new home, four spaces, but they're asking for three spaces, one in the garage and two in the driveway. The average slope of the property is 6.2%. It's a rectangular shaped parcel located mid-block along Montevista Avenue in the Baltimore Park neighborhood. The parcel is developed in 1941 with a single-story 1,014 square foot home, which is two bedrooms and one bath, and a detached 291 square foot, single car garage behind the house. There is a shared access easement and driveway, which provides access to the parking areas for 112 and 116 Montevista. The new home would be a two-story, four-bedroom home with an additional 1,207 square foot basement. The two additional onsite parking spaces would be provided in the driveway for a total of three parking spaces, given the one in the garage. The maximum height of the house would be 29 feet and 10 and 3/4 inches from natural grade, where 30 is the maximum allowed by the code. The commission should note that the front porch stairs encroached into the front yard setback. A condition of approval would require the stairs meet the setback requirement of 14 feet from the front property line. Secondly, the hedgerow planting fence on the north property line can exceed the allowable six-foot height limit. As the applicant has not requested a fence height exception permit, a condition of approval has been included that requires the landscape plan be modified to specify plantings that do not exceed six feet in height limit of maturity. The project conforms to current R1 zoning standards for lot coverage, floor area, floor area ratio setbacks, and height limits. For design review, staff generally finds the proposed architectural design and finishes would be compatible with the prevailing neighborhood character and scale. Many homes along Montevista Avenue have been remodeled or rebuilt, and two-story homes have become the norm in this neighborhood. In addition, the proposed second story has been stepped in off-the-ground story to provide larger setbacks at the front and sides, and is nicely articulated with staggered elements to break up the massing. Various aspects of Larkspur's design guidelines for single-family dwellings have been employed with this proposed design. Staff recommends that the project is generally consistent with the findings required to approve design review application, and those are listed in the findings section of the staff report. Regarding the variance, as indicated earlier, new homes are required to comply with current parking standards, which would be four onsite spaces, two required of which one would be covered, and two would be guest spaces. Only guest spaces can be parked in tandem for a required space. Full compliance with the current parking standards on this narrow lot, which is also limited by the shared access easement with 112 Montevista, would require a two-car garage that would occupy a significant portion of the ground story elevation. This would constrain the ground floor design and detract from the small-scale residential character in this neighborhood and for the site. Many homes in the neighborhood are served by a one-car garage or a garage in the rear yards. Therefore, some flexibility of the parking standards would serve to maintain consistency with the development pattern of the surrounding neighborhood and would not be considered a grant of special privilege. The staff recommends that the project is consistent with the required findings for approval of the variance to the parking requirement. And these findings are listed in the staff report that you have with you tonight. So with that, I'd like to recommend approval of the proposed design review and variance, subject to the findings and conditions of approval that are outlined in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Does anybody have any questions of Lorraine? Seeing no questions, I guess I would ask if the applicant or architect would like to make a presentation. I see two hands up, three hands, four.
Hello, this is Brad Hubbell of Hubbell Daily Architecture and Design.
Okay, go ahead, Brad.
How are you today?
Good. How about you?
Good, thank you. I am wondering if there's any way to share my screen, Kristin? No, okay. That puts a crimp in our style here, but.
We can put you on the screen so we can see you. I can change you to a panelist just while you speak, but we don't allow the applicants to control the meeting.
Okay, I just had a presentation, but. So there were some concerns raised, and I wanted to approach those. I think Lorraine did a great job of explaining where we started and where we are with the.
Sorry. He's there. I just made him a panelist so you can see him. There he is.
Hello.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I don't know what, where, I got cut off, but I'll repeat a little bit, pardon me. But so just wanted to say that Lorraine did a wonderful job describing our process and the project. In the interest of time, I'd like to address concerns that were raised by neighbors. And so the first was about building height, and I wanted to say that we have a, we've gone through and made sure that all of the elements of the building are indeed within the allowed limits of building height per their comments, and as we've gone over multiple times with Lorraine, to make sure that everything is clear. The other element that we've done is as far as parking, I think Lorraine just covered that issue. There is a question about the retaining wall seen here on elevation one in the lower left, right at the property line, and maybe, Kristin, it'd be better if you could go to our main level plan, A22, I believe, A22. There. So along the northern property line, which borders between 116, which is our property, and 118, the neighbor's property, there's a retaining wall. There's concern that that retaining wall is leaning and would not fare well through any construction, and we agree and are prepared to repair or rebuild that wall as necessary along the length of the construction site, so between the two buildings. Another question raised by the the neighbors at 118, and here you can see in the upper right corner, it would be the southeast corner of their property, there is a keynote 12, which might be a little fuzzy for some to see, but Kristin, if you can sew the, move your arrow down and to the right, up to the neighbor's property. There, there's a little indent in the line there, and that expresses the neighbor's kitchen window. They are concerned about privacy. We have not shown any windows opposed from that on purpose. And then, Kristin, if you could go to A2.3, they were concerned about their window at the upper, and you can see at their ridge, which is the vertical line in the middle there. We are aware that that window is lower than the bedroom windows directly opposite on the new house that's proposed. And we're happy to discuss with them. Either we can frost those windows, or we can create clear-story windows for that bedroom along that line, being that there is an egress window out facing west. So those are the concerns as raised by the neighbors to the north. Pardon me. Oh, and also, as far as the screening along that northern property line, we're happy to find new material so that it wouldn't be taller than the six-foot allowed per the condition of approval that Lorraine mentioned. I think that should cover everything. If there's, if there are any other questions, I'm here to answer them. We're really pleased with the way that this building has been sculpted, and we're looking forward to having, having a discussion.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I have a couple of questions, actually. And so I noticed the garage seems really shallow. It's code, it's 18 feet, but if you have anything bigger than the Volkswagen bug, it's going to be pretty tight. And I don't know whether there's any other way. It looks like you've got a window down there and, you know, well, or something. But, you know, it's up, it's up to them. I'm just, just wondering about that. Then, secondly, and the drawings I've got are really hard to read dimensions on, but if I look at the section that goes through the attic. Right, I think this is the one. So we, there's one with dimensions on it, and, oh, maybe I was looking at. So it looks like there's eight feet to that ceiling. And if I'm reading it right, your attic's taller than, is at least eight feet clear in there, which means there's FAR in the attic, which is conditioned. And I don't know whether that's true or not, but I'm just asking about it.
I can answer that if you'd like.
Yeah, sure.
Great. When we say conditioned space, it's only because we're, it's most efficient to have insulation and weatherproofing, excuse me, proofing around the perimeter of a building. Therefore, we're putting insulation in the rafters of the roof rather than in the ceiling plane, which means that any heat ducts, et cetera, that run in that attic space aren't having, they're not having to fight the cold of the winter or in the summer, the AC isn't having to fight the heat of that oven space. So it's a technical term, meaning that it's conditioned space, not that we're actually heating the space. Secondly, the predominance of these rooms, the bedrooms, all have vaulted ceilings, much like you see in that lower section there, building section four. And the misconception of the section is that it's cutting through some of those lower portions, so it seems taller. Nonetheless, our ceiling joists in this model are shown less thick than they would be, and we haven't done structural on this yet. They will become thicker. We did measurements based on what those ceiling joists would be, and we end up with seven feet and maybe a quarter at the underside of the actual ridge to the top of rough joists. So any kind of idea of that being more than seven feet is not possible. It's going to definitely be less than seven feet from top of joists to peak at the ridge of the highest roofs.
I actually thought that might be the case. Those look like really skinny ceiling joists.
Yeah, it's unfortunately a graphic issue that we will clear up for sure.
No worries. And then, one of the things I was, I wanted to ask about is, is there a driveway easement? Or is that not a driveway easement? So you have your garage in front, but it looks like maybe the next-door neighbors have their garage behind, or?
Well, you can see in the plant, in the site plan, there is a garage, there is a driveway easement. I'll wait till Kristin gets there. Thank you for being speedy. You can see in this view, oh, actually, that's fine, Kristin, if you want, or there. You can see that in the lower-left portion of that view, you can see the existing driveway that ramps up to the rear where the, yes. So there is a shared access easement four feet into each property line.
And does the neighbor use that for their garage or not?
Yes, we're not, we're not encroaching on that. We're not taking away any of that existing driveway, if that's your question.
Okay, that's pretty much what I was asking. That's all I have, unless somebody else has something.
Yeah, Brock, I had a question I wanted to ask. So Brad, thank you so much for addressing the concerns of the neighbor. I think maybe it was the neighbor at 118, you had reviewed his questions. We did see some additional correspondence from some of the other neighbors. And I think we'll probably address those later on in the meeting. But I had one specific question that kind of arose for me was, is there, and this may not be for you, I know this is for the staff as well, is there a heritage tree on the site?
No. There, there's some existing trees that are down the lower left, but none of them, no, lower right, that's where Kristin's mouse is there.
But the palm tree, okay, so none of the trees, just to clear up some confusion, none of the trees on the site are heritage trees.
No.
Great. Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions? Okay, Brad, thanks, thanks very much. I'll bring it up to the attendees for comment.
Kristin, are you? Sorry, I'm trying to move him out of panelist. I'm not very fast at this.
No worries.
Where are you? Here we go. Okay. Okay, so.
Because we have a lot of attendees, I would ask everybody to be relatively brief in their comments, but go ahead, whoever's.
I'm gonna allow Sonia Milos to speak. Sonia, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, hi. I live at 205 Montevista. Yes, thank you. I live at 205 Montevista Avenue, right down the street. And my concern is with parking, and she knows, come up many times, how stressed we are for parking. And I, the applicant is right that a lot of the homes have a single garage in the back, but those are usually the small and older homes. And in some cases, those, the parking and those garages can't even be reached by the, from the streets. So I would ask the commission to please take into consideration the distress that all the, all the people who live around here are experiencing constantly, especially with the opening of all these restaurants nearby. Into consideration, I would recommend against giving them a variance on the parking restriction, parking recommendation.
Thank you. Is there somebody else who would like to speak?
John and Berta, and I'm having trouble reading this title, and Sinetti, and you can speak now.
John and Berta Anisetti, we're at 15 William, so around the corner. We have a one-story house with a very limited view up to one of the foothills of Mount Tam. And we can see some ridge line of that foothill, and the story poles show that we're going to lose basically all of that view. It's, it was hard to take a picture because of the backlighting, but I'd like to invite somebody from the commission to come over to our house and see the impact on our view to the south, because it's a limited view and it's the only one that we have.
Yeah, it's the only view we have, and it also cuts out the view of the trees. That is, the mountains towards the back, and then towards the front of it, the view is the trees, and it blocks everything out.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you. Any other, there seems to be quite a few hands up, so.
Their hand went back up. Did they mean to? Okay.
I'm.
Susan Lobedon? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Anisetti, you're still on. Did you mean?
I wanted to follow up, just again, I'm not, you know, familiar with really how the timing of these work, but when might I hear if somebody will be able to come over to take a look at the impact on our view?
I, I think we will be deciding on whether we will pass the application or not tonight. It would, so probably there won't be anybody coming over unless it's, unless it's held up for some reason or another, so. Normally, the planning, that you would go to the planning department before this and ask for somebody to come over.
Depending on the decision of the commission tonight, one option, of course, is always to continue the application so you can investigate this. So I'm gonna take Mr. Anisetti off and invite Susan Lobedon to talk. Susan, you are allowed to talk now.
Susan?
I don't see that. I don't see that she's muted. We can come back to Susan. For some reason, Zoom keeps asking me to promote her to a panelist. I don't understand that. Um, we'll come back to Susan and we'll go to uh Tom Simmons. Tom, you're allowed to talk.
Yes, hi, this is Tom Siemens. I I own the property right next door, 112 Montevista, on the south side of the proposed property. Uh, thanks for hearing me. Uh, my primary concern is privacy. The window uh that is on the stairs, you might, if you go to the one of the, one of the drawings, you'll see the window on the stairs, which is, it looks like almost a two-story window, looks directly into my bedroom window. Um, see if you get the right one up, you can see it. Okay, so look in the lower, the lower right, see the tall window there? That window looks directly into my bedroom window, so I would ask that that window be made translucent or frosted or something else so as to not invade my bedroom privacy. Um, so that's one ask, and then second ask is the southeastern window, which looks into my backyard. I believe that's a bathroom from what I could tell by the design. And I would ask that that window also be translucent or frosted so as to minimize the pri- the the invasion of my privacy in my backyard. And then the last point I'd like to make is to Natasha's comment. Um, that there is indeed a heritage tree in the front yard. Uh, Larkspur defines a heritage tree as 50 inches or more in circumference, 24 inches above the natural grade. I went out and measured it before this meeting, and it is indeed a heritage tree, and it's not one that's exempted by being on the fire-prone list. So that is a heritage tree, the palm in the front yard, and it should not be removed without special permission.
Uh, thank you, Tom. Are there any other?
Yes, there are. Uh, Tom, you can lower your hand if you don't mind, so I know that you're you're done. Thank you. Uh, Cheryl, Tanas, Tanasovich. You have to unmute yourself, please.
Yeah, hi, thank you very much for letting me speak. Um, my name is, I I live about a half a block down at 205 Monte Vista. And just to put this in perspective, uh, just behind us, one block behind us is is Perry's on one end of the, Pico's on the other. And obviously, restaurants and businesses are not required to have parking available. So there's a lot of business parking that happens on these streets that are just one block away from all these businesses. And they mentioned that there are a lot of uh houses in the neighborhood that have one-car garages in our property, and we're not the only ones. We have no off-street parking and no possibility of off-street parking, because these are very old. The driveways are extremely narrow. They were made for 1920s automobiles. So we're highly impacted by parking. Um, so the new structures do not have any deviation from this off-street parking places. And I see no reason why this should be an exception. It's gonna cause a much bigger impact on the neighborhood so far as parking. We're we're older and groceries and so on. That's really uh an imposition. And I would very strongly ask that this plans be modified to allow for the, to keep with the regulation that there before off-street parking places. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a a phone caller. I'm allowing you to talk, 415 9241402.
Uh, James Holmes, Larkspur. I have one question I'd like to ask and then a three, three comments. Uh, the quest, foundational question is, uh, how far back is the second story setback from the front? What what is the uh length of the front setback? Front second story setback. Could someone answer that?
Lorraine, you wanna unmute yourself?
Lorraine?
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, I just unmuted. Um, let's see, I need to look at the plans just a second. It's hard for me to read the dimensions um on the screen, the.
It says 20 feet.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, how much?
20 feet.
20 feet, okay. I mean, obviously, a key aspect of this is uh an adequate setback from the uh, from the front. So that the front portion of the building uh still speaks as a uh single story and matches to some degree the uh, the building uh next door. Um, it it does seem to me generally that this is a a rather large building for the lot that coming in at a total of 4,000 square feet. Um, the uh planning staff referred to the quote, "small-scale residential uh neighborhood," unquote. And I'm not sure that uh that comports with this, but uh um, aside from that, um, a couple of other points. Uh, there was a discrepancy cited in one of the public uh comment letters, I believe from the Lobodons, uh, that as to whether there, whether the um basement qualified for FAR exclusion. And I didn't see that that was resolved in any of the uh planning documents. So I I I think that's something we have to determine for sure, whether or not uh that there is indeed a discrepancy as the the Lobodon cited. Um, there was not, I did not see any reference in the staff report or elsewhere to archaeological uh remains uh and the possibility thereof or or keeping an an eye out for them. Uh, but um, uh, Larkspur past and present on pages 150 to 151, um, which described this property, and incidentally, I think probably it's always useful as a matter of of procedure uh when a property is in um Larkspur past and present, that excerpt sh- should be attached to the staff report. But in any event, it uh, it it suggests that there may be uh uh archaeological remains uh in that area, and indeed that that, the uh uh ridge on which that, or the mound on which that house and its neighbors sit may ha- may have been a uh, a a midden. Uh, and it says that uh the remnants of uh midden materials currently remain in in some yards. So I can read the whole thing for you if you would like, but it does seem like there should be some uh consideration of the possibility of archaeological remains in light of what is stated in Larkspur uh past and present. And that care should be taken uh to to review that uh aspect, possibly by addressing it in the the uh conditions. I didn't see anything in that effect. Uh, lastly, and a number of commenters have referred to the parking problems. And uh, I recognize that uh probably there isn't much that can be done about that and that uh the case for a variance uh is uh is generally good. However, there is one aspect of this, which the uh planning department can, uh, this commission can directly address, and that is uh on page four of the staff report, it says there will be a loss of one on-street uh parking place. Uh, this, that that really would be adding insult to injury or vice versa. Uh, so that, and that it really would, to to take something away, it's one thing to, you know, uh, give some flexibility to homeowners, it's another thing to take something away from the public and thus exacerbate the already existing non-conformity. Uh, so I think to take something away from the public, given all of the evidence of the parking problems, really would be a grant of special privilege. And so I believe that uh the driveway should be configured so that there will not be a loss of a public parking space. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Is there, I see one other hand. Oh, two hands.
Um, okay, we're gonna go to Ms. Lobodon has disappeared. Um, okay, so we have another call in, um, but no hand raised. James, you need, just, James was 9241402, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's.
I I've completed, I've completed my comments.
Okay. His hand is still raised all over it. Um, so we have one last caller, F. Loeb, I believe that's Ms. Lobodon. You are on mute. You need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. We had technical difficulties on our end. I I uh, I wanted to ask the architect or somebody to go through the uh maximum height calculation. They went through it very quickly. But uh, when we were looking at the city of Larkspur standards, it appears that the um, the height uh exceeds the 30-foot maximum. If you take it from the finished floor of the the garage area. And the reason I bring this up is because, you know, we've enjoyed views of the um the redwood trees and with the story poles that went up, uh, there, we'll no longer be able to enjoy those views. So it seems as though the building is closer to 40 feet tall and four stories, not just the two-story uh house that it's been presented as. So I was kinda hoping that one of the planners or somebody could share with us how how that code is interpreted.
I think uh perhaps Lorraine can comment on it, but uh, and this is Brock. Uh, it's from, it's from a natural grade. So when you uh have a basement, it's not measured from the bottom of the basement to the peak of the roof. It's measured from uh the, where the grade hits the house. So it's, it's very close to the, um, I mean, it can't get much closer than than it it is to the height limit. But from what I could tell, it's, it's um, it's at the required height. Does that help at all?
It it does. It just, when I read, Brock, when I read the the code, it says the heights measured directly upward from the natural grade, like you were saying, or the finished grade around the perimeter of the structure, whichever is lower to the highest point of the roof. And that's what's got me tripped up, because I I think this is a 40-foot-tall building.
Can can I comment on this, please? I think I can explain it for you. So height is measured from natural or finished grade, whichever is lower. But in this case, their finished floor is below grade. And so therefore, the height is measured at the natural grade adjacent to the building. The buried portion is not included in the height. And because the stories step back from the front, can you see where I have the the wall, the forward wall notified, noticed here? It steps back, and then we measure the height from the grade here to the top of the roof pitch. You don't measure down to the bottom of the floor at the garage wall and then up to a ridge line that stepped back. You have to measure it almost in slices through the building based on the grade lines on the sides of the building as you go. Does that make sense?
Well, well, I, yeah, I I guess the 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 comment really is that the um, the story pulls one up. The um, we we've enjoyed this view and it's now gonna be obstructed. And it seems as though the attic space is not quite defined, and I know that we talked about that earlier in the, in the meeting. But if there's a way the architect could revise that that attic space so that it's, it's not a, you know, an attic space, it's more of just, it it's lowered so that it's more like a crawl space up there or something, that would probably help everybody that's gonna have to live with this building going forward. The other comment I have is on the solar panels, and I did write about this. And I I guess it's not part of the code, but uh solar panels are kinda tricky. I know they're they're good for the planet and and I'm all for that, but they can also produce glare. And I'm not sure that, or I don't know what we can do to assure that by the time they install these, these solar panels, there aren't neighbors that are suffering from glare as the sun hits them. So I don't know if there's a study that can be made or somehow assurance is made that we're not gonna end up with a nuisance glare off of these panels.
We have limited ability under state law to restrict solar panels if they meet the setbacks and comply with the height limits above the roof line. We may not be able to impose much restriction on their placement. Obviously, the placement is based on their ability to gain the most sun. I can look into it further if you'd like.
Well, I would, uh, you know, I don't know if there's a different material, material that they might be able to use that, you know, I'm not an expert by any means on this, but all I know is that I've seen, I've seen the results of a solar installation that produces glare, and it's, it's a real problem. So I would ask that that be uh considered. Um, and then I, just the other thing that uh, somebody brought up the heritage tree. I I don't know why the architect said there isn't heritage trees on the property. I I believe there is one that's being, one or two that's being taken out. It's in the plan set. And then just the last, the last thing, and I'll let you go, the uh, our concern about the parking as well. Uh, since the pandemic hit, it hasn't been as bad, but prior to the pandemic, uh, the streets were were routinely jam-packed with patrons and workers from the downtown restaurants, especially up up Montevista. You couldn't really find a parking spot. It was a real problem. That's changed, but I I I assume that we'll be back to um that same full parking condition before too long. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Um, I still see one hand up, Kristen.
That's the same um speaker who was just speaking.
Um, I might ask if the architect would like to address some of the comments. Is that, is that okay?
There we go. Brad, I've allowed you to talk.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Ask, ask, what would you like me to address first?
Um, well, I think uh, one thought I had uh in addressing the parking issue is um, uh, would it be possible, and I'm not trying to design your house for you, but um, to do a two-car garage with a waterproof porch? Um, because it looks like you have the room to do that. And um, that would get four cars off, off the road.
We uh, if that was the case, we would wanna slide the driveway over. Um, uh, we could push the garage over and get that in as well. Um, the intent was to try and not to excavate too, too much, too close to the uh northern property line. But that is an option, what you expressed.
The, I I know from experience too, that the the parking and the traffic on Montevista, which you're you're gonna deal with or your clients are gonna deal with, is is always been pretty wild, particularly when the schools get out. But anyway, uh, it looked like that was a possibility. And I, uh, you can address the height limits, but the, it looks like you're ducked underneath. Um, uh, but uh, and I'm not sure whether I should go into this now, but you could have lower plates and drop the roof slightly. I don't know that would make that much of a difference to the. uh, and I'm not sure whether I should go into this now, but you could have lower plates and drop the roof slightly. I don't know that would make that much of a difference to the neighbors.
We have eight-foot plates up on on the upper level and we were looking at our sections. And once we get into structural design, we would want to try and bring that roof, uh, the the roof plate down appropriately. Uh, it would do two things. When it would bring a ridge down, it'll also decrease that attic space. And it'll also, by doing both of those things, um, increase visibility over the house. So this is something that we will be actively working toward, which is to mitigate the 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 height as you see it through that process.
Okay, I think that's that's the only questions I had. Does anybody else have any questions? Um, hearing none, um, I would like to bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Chair Wagstaff, we have one individual in the audience who would like to speak again. Do you want to allow them to speak?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, hi. Thanks, Kristen and Brock. I was just wondering if the architect could uh, respond to the request I had on the privacy issue of the south uh, stairwell window facing into my bedroom. I wonder if the architect could address that.
Brad, would you like to address that?
Brad, you can talk.
Thank you. Yes, uh, so that is, uh, one thing we would appreciate working with you on that for sure. Uh, I was looking at my notes and our our site photos and I don't know how we would have missed that. So I would appreciate the opportunity to work with you if that's at all possible with the planning commission to come up with a a strategy. Of course, we don't want to um, uh, impose ourselves on you for sure. So, um, that would be something we we'd like to to to, uh, have an opportunity to discuss.
Brad, could you just quickly address the issue about the palm tree? I'm just curious about the measurements.
That I was I was not aware and Mea Copan, I was not aware that that was a heritage tree. Um, I did not know that palm trees were considered heritage trees. So that's why I was answering in such confidence that there wasn't a heritage tree, but that is, uh, something we can address as well. The the landscape in that in that general area is is something we could work with to see if we can preserve. Can you go to the site plan? Kristen? Please.
I'm trying.
No worries.
This auto cad, uh, is very difficult to maneuver.
So you can see it in that little, you had it there.
Right here. That it?
That I don't think it's that close to the existing house.
This one?
One moment, please. I'm, pardon me while I check my own set here and make sure. So I'm seeing in the plans is, uh, two six-inch ornamental trees at the front. I don't really see where on the survey even calls out ornamental six-inch, two-six-inch trees in the front that, um, that you're looking at. I don't see where that heritage tree. There's a bay that's twelve inches, but that's in the street parking strip. And the trees in the back are fruit trees. Can someone tell me where that?
So this is Natasha. When I went down to the property, I saw what I believe is a palm tree. So when you're facing the property on the right, so, um, right on the front corner.
Uh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the Arbers report and I do see it, but why isn't in our survey? I do see a Mexican fan palm. The trunk diameter is, they say it's twenty-five inches. And it's fair to good, so.
That would be a heritage tree, however.
It's only, is that twenty-five inches in circumference or diameter?
It says trunk diameter twenty-five inches.
So it is a heritage tree.
Uh, fortunately, it's in a location that we it's not where we're building. Uh, we could do our best to protect that as much as possible and work with the Arbers on that.
So I have a question on that then. So the options are that you they leave it in place or they is am I correct in thinking they could they could apply for a permit to have it removed?
Yes, they can ask for a heritage tree removal permit. We could continue this hearing to allow them to request that as well as perhaps make some changes if the commission believes that any modifications are necessary.
I think palm trees are not, um, you you may well be able to get a palm tree removed or moved. Uh, if you go, uh, before the heritage tree committee, but it's we can't, you know, it is there now.
So the commission is responsible for heritage tree removal permits when associated with a project that's before you. If its removal is related to the project.
So we we can decide, Kristen?
They have not applied for a heritage tree, nor have we have we advertised a heritage tree in the public notice. So we would have to continue this application to renotice it to include a heritage tree removal permit if they wish to ask for one.
Okay. As that, you understand that anyway?
Um, I understand the process. I'm 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 busily looking at our our plans to see its location in relation to to the to our proposed lo- uh, building location.
Well, um, maybe we should bring it back to the commission. It it sort of is what it is.
Demonstrate that we can keep that tree. Is there a reason why we'd have to go through the removal process?
No, if you keep it, there that's not a problem.
Then that would be my my take on that would be, uh, that we would work to keep that tree in that location. It's not in the way of structure. Uh, we we can work around, uh, root balls for palms are very condensed, so we can be able to do a structural system that spans over any root ball for for the palm and preserve it in that corner. As far as the, there is one other heritage tree I see noted there, which is a lemon. Uh, I believe we had discussed um, that does not need to be removed. There was at some point, Lorraine, I don't remember. It was a while back, but, um, there is real really no reason for removing that lemon in the back. Believe it's tree number six in that view that you're looking at.
Again, if you can retain it, um, that probably, yes.
Okay. I think we should, uh, bring it back to the commission. Would, uh, somebody like to start out with with, uh, their comments? How about, um, let's start with Jeff.
Alrighty, um, so I I find this plan, uh, uh, I like it. I mean, I think it's a beautiful plan and I think the architect did a really nice job with his renderings. Um, and I think, uh, Montevista, I I live fairly close to Montevista. I have a lot of friends on that street and I think it's in character with, uh, the houses, uh, in Montevista, particularly, uh, for, you know, the houses that are a little bit further, I guess, to the south or where I guess, yes, to the south. Between Baltimore. Uh, there, but I think in general, um, it's a beautiful street and I think it deserves beautiful houses. And I think this is a very well-done house. Um, and I think, as I said, it's designed really well. I do feel for the neighbors, um, in terms of uh, you know, larger house creep, because a lot of these houses originally were small, one-story houses. Uh, but that's really not the character of the houses, which as you go down Montevista and some of the newer houses that have been built on that street, they're more in character of this house. I don't find any problems with the height. Um, and I understand the issues. I understand the, I I forgot the name, the lobes, the concern about the height. Um, I mean, it's an exaggeration to say it's a four-story house. It's a uh, the grade is where the grade is, and if it falls underneath the the height requirements, then it falls underneath the height requirements. And so um, I don't think they should be penalized just because it has the impression of being taller because of a subterranean garage. And the same issue with the FAR. I think a lot of the houses on Montevista exceed the FAR. Um, and so I think it's fine. Now, I it seems like one of the biggest and most consistent complaints is about parking along Montevista. And you know, this is the the, uh, the downside to being popular. Uh, Larkspur is a popular town and we have a lot of businesses uh, like Perry's and it's a two-edged sword. I mean, you know, on the one hand, you want business, uh, which is going to bring parking. On the other hand, you hate not being able to find a parking space. But I don't think there are many people along Montevista who can honestly say they have four off-site parking spots. So I think it would be a disservice to the applicants to say that they have to comply when really nobody else on this street uh, has four off-site parking spaces. I mean, one way to mitigate it is to build a garage in the back, which I think that's not proper, not not the right thing to do. Um, so I I would be in favor of approving that. Uh, and I know that's disappointing to a lot of the people who feel parking is a problem. Um, but in general, I think the architect is, uh, if he works with the neighbors on the privacy issues, um, I I feel badly for people whose views are blocked, but they're partial views. Uh, and again, that's the nature of, uh, development is that sometimes people are going to be unhappy with that. Um, so I don't think this is out of character for the neighborhood and I would vote to approve this.
Thank you, Jeff. Daniel?
I'm recused.
Oh, that's right. Okay, Natasha.
It's Brock. Um, so so like Jeff, I thought it was a very beautiful design. I I it's pleasing to the eye. I liked it very much. Um, and I think it makes sense for that site and the neighborhood that you build up. So yeah, so I liked it very mu- much as well. And I also could understand the the why the parking variance was applied for uh, to make this, uh, design work. I must say that I I it was hard for me to listen to all the neighbors' concerns because they are all valid. Um, I do hear that parking is a particular issue. And I know we've talked through some and a number of the concerns that were raised and I'm very pleased that the architect is trying to address them. And I I hope that he does continue to work with the neighbors. I wanted to address just a couple of things. Nobody brought it up on the call, but I read about it in number of the in in the number of the correspondences that were provided to us to review was concerns regarding construction. Um, there is a construction management plan, uh, in condition thirty-two. So hopefully that will alleviate the issues that will arise around that. Um, on the the height and the right to review, uh, so that there is no kind of right, there is no right to review. So and I think that is a sort of sort of unfortunate sort one of the unfortunate, uh, results of having development, just like Jeff just described. When you have modern development, which is good for a neighborhood, it does unfortunately impact the neighbor's views. So I I'm inclined just to not not have that addressed in this situation here and leave the design from that perspective well alone. On the parking, however, I think Brock had a suggestion there that seemed to perhaps work with the architect and I wonder if that could be looked into further. I'm sort of open to hear what the rest of the commit, uh, the commission will say on that. Because if parking is an issue, if that's something that can be some solved for, I would sort of be in favor of that. And I would like to hear the rest of the commission's views on that. And then the tree. So I think we sold the put that we sold that one, that when there are two heritage trees on site and it seems like they will be left on on the property. And if they are going to be removed, uh, a permit would need to be applied for. And I guess that can even happen after the fact. It doesn't have to be dealt with here today. If they want to remove it at a later day, I guess they would just apply for a permit at a later date. Um, so yeah, I think that's my comments, Brock. Thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. Um, so I guess, uh, I have a few comments too. I I believe there's a way to get a two-car garage underneath, um, which would which would help the parking situation and I think would be an enhancement to the house as well. Um, and it can be put underneath the waterproof porch. So I, uh, I think the question is whether whether we can have staff work on that or or, um, make it a condition of approval or have the architect come back. The the other thing, and I understand that they're trying hard to work with the neighbors, is I think, uh, we should be more explicit about that they have agreed to 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 use some sort of, um, to change windows that affect neighbors to frost windows that that, uh, can't be changed. And if it were me, I would have them drop the plates a couple of feet. Um, six-foot plates with a peak ceiling in a in a room in the rooms upstairs would help the heights of the building. It would drop it a couple of feet. And I think it would be, if you look at it relative to the the next door neighbor, two-story house, it's quite a bit taller. I like the building. I like the architecture. So if it were up to me, I would probably suggest postponing a decision and having them come back w- once the changes have actually been made so that we could look at them again. Having said that, I guess, um, is there somebody who wants to maybe, uh, make a motion?
Before we do that, Brock, I did one additional question. In the staff report, there was some suggested, uh, conditions. Does the, if we, somebody makes a motion, do we have to address the specific conditions? Maybe this is a question for Lorraine.
Yeah, the conditions are actually, um, the three conditions you're talking about are listed on the condition five. Yeah, number one, A, B, and C. So since they're listed as conditions of approval, you don't have to separately, um, put it in your motion, just say, oh, you said the conditions of approval.
Oh, I, okay, got it. Okay, so we don't have to specifically reference them.
And then I clarify something. If you have new changes you want to add conditions for. Yeah, you can make those part of your motion.
I see.
If you're going to approve it conditioned on changes that staff would If you're going to approve it conditioned on changes that staff would enforce, that would be part of your motion.
Alternatively, we ask them to revise plans and we review the revised plans
Right.
at another, at a later meeting.
Correct.
Which is, I, I think would be worth doing. I, I personally am not a big palm tree fan. If they were to remove it, it would be okay by me, but, but they can apply for that at that point.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can say, I mean, the, the tree is the tree. I think they can apply for it then or the later date. It's, I, I like what you've suggested with respect to the parking. I would be inclined to agree with you if you, to have them review the plans and resubmit with a parking garage and see if that works.
Would you like to make a, a motion to that effect? Since Daniel's the only other one.
I could make one, I suppose, but I'll let Natasha.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, the old doctor in the crowd who doesn't know.
Oh, that guy.
I might need a little guidance on how to make the motion, but it would be too, but it's to continue, right? No, is it, what, I, I would, to continue the the application
To a date uncertain.
To a date uncertain, in order for us to review revised plans that address the suggestions made by the planning commission?
Yes.
That's what we're trying to say. And the recommendations are a compliance with the parking the code requirements for parking. So we need, we need two onsite and two in the, two in the garage and two on the driveway, is that?
Or four, four.
Or onsite parking.
Or onsite parking.
Oh, for onsite parking, right, okay. And then I, I, I could go either way on the height. I felt more strongly on the parking than on the height.
Well, that
Jeff, you are the deciding person here.
Well, I think, I think, you know, if it's, if, if, if it fits in the architect's design to lower the plates, I could see that. So I would just say that the motion should be crafted that will continue to a uncertain date in order to examine the feasibility of complying with Larkspur parking ordinance by crafting a two car garage and two onsite parking spaces in the driveway and consideration of lowering the plates to reduce the overall height of the house, provided that it's consistent with the design as envisioned by the architect.
I like that.
And I do too, and the windows?
And in addition to working with the neighbors to ensure privacy per the recommendations made during the planning meeting. And to be decided mutually between the architect and the neighbors.
I would consider that a motion.
There it is, it's formal motion.
And then I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, Kristin?
Commissioner Chalmers?
A guess.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commission, Chair Wagstaff?
Yes.
And let the record show, Daniel Kuntzler has recused himself and Laura Talber is absent.
Okay. So I guess we don't have to have a 10 day appeal period on a, on that, do we?
Not yet, have not rendered a decision.
Okay, good. All right. Can we move forward and let's see, what are we doing next? Approval of the minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion? Daniel?
Sure, I to approve the minutes from the electric plant commission's regular meeting of, is this right, October 26, 2021?
Oh, gotta be later than that.
That'd be later than that.
Nope.
No, yeah, we have a long delay there. Thanksgiving and various things, yeah.
Right, well.
Do I have a second?
Second, oh, Jeff could do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unless we need a roll call. Are there any planning commissioners reports? Okay, now we get to the really good stuff, the election of officers. So Daniel is the, do we have to formally nominate you for chair? Is that, or do you just move into that spot?
It's normal for you to nominate. And typical, the chair moves up to, the vice chair moves up to chair. It's up to all of you though, to decide that.
I make a motion that Daniel moves from vice chair to chair.
Daniel, do you, do you want that? Okay, just checking. Oh, it's not the point, okay. Then, then I'll second.
Do we have a second?
Yes, Natasha seconded.
To check before.
A roll call or do we do the vice chair at the same time?
You can go ahead and extend that motion to recommend a vice chair as well.
Okay, I would recommend Natasha for vice chair.
Second it.
Do you want that?
Better.
Okay, do we have a, well, let's have a roll call.
Okay, I'm just writing my notes here. Commissioner Kuntzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Well, a very quick yes by Jeff, thanks, um, yes.
Chair Wagstaff.
Thanks, Chair Wagstaff, yes.
Chair Wagstaff. Record show, that's four in the favor of the motion and one absent, that's Laura Talber.
Okay. That's, that's it?
That's it, well, we need a motion.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Yeah.
Happy New Year, we need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, we have a motion to adjourn.
I move for adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, everybody.
Take care, everybody be safe.
Thanks, Kristin.
It's a pleasure meeting you.
Yeah. Yeah, take care, everybody, a lot of a micron out there, so mask up.
Yeah, really.
N95s.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you seeing a lot then, Jeff, in the hospital?
Our hospital census is the highest it's been since the beginning of the pandemic right now.
Wow.
Oh, really? Gosh, higher than the last?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
And the problem is of, is staff, because of the number of staff out, that, you know, we're very close to having California declare no elective surgery again very soon, if this doesn't calm down.
Is it true that they're asking staff to come in even if positive after?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, it's
We as potential patients be concerned about that?
Yes. You should be, that's why everybody really needs to wear, be wearing a 95s. Because, you know, just cloth masks don't cut it and surgical masks that are open on the sides don't cut it either. So if you're in a, inside a building, definitely wear an N95.
What do you recommend for children? I mean, we can't find N95 for children.
Small, you know, there isn't unfortunately, but small N95s, there are some that they make that are pretty small, like a small N95. You know, most people don't wear N95s correctly because, you know, really, they should be fit tested. Like, you know, all hospital staff got the fit tested. So you do the best you can with children, unfortunately. You know, you just, you know, get them vaccinated if they're eligible to get vaccinated.